Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, June 26. We'll call to order at 6:12 PM. Move -- we go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and contract negotiations with non-union personnel regarding Fire Chief Philip Wonka and Chief of Police Robert Holst. We will return to regular session immediately following.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote. Brian Lee called roll.
William Membery.
Aye. William Membery.
Slip Ambassador Ash?
Aye.
Chairman Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome back to the Select Board meeting, continuing regular session at 6:30 PM. Surplus equipment request, School Department -- oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to make a motion that we ratify the fire chief's contract.
Do you have any specifics?
Do you want dates on that, or any specifics?
If we could do the --
From June -- from June 30, 20 -- I'm sorry, July 1, 2024 -- 2023. Oh, my God. We start over. Make a motion that we ratify the fire chief's contract effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I left them with Bill. He'll sign. I'll just pass them down and do it now while we're here. While he starts on that, surplus equipment request, School Department, Tilt Skillet, third read.
No concerns with that.
You didn't have any concerns with the tilt skillet, did you?
I have no concerns.
Okay.
And we discussed putting it out as is, where it is.
For public auction.
Take it yourself.
Yep.
If not, we'll
Scrap it.
Scrap it for metal.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to deem the tilt skillet as surplus property and offer to -- for auction, and if no takers, scrapped for metal value.
All right, well, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're going to pass over the review of the hazardous communication policy draft, fourth read. We'll carry that in our next July meeting. We'll come back to the Assistant Treasurer position when the treasurer's here. Review of meeting minutes. March 1, 2021, May 3, 2021, and November 29, 2021.
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes as of March 1, 2021, May 3, 2021, November 29, 2021, as written.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll pass over January 3, 10, and June 21st. Or did we have -- no, we had one of those.
Do you have June 21st? I was going to say, we had a supplemental.
Yep.
Make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from Wednesday, June 21, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Review of the Equipment Operator Building Maintenance Labor Position Description. Come on up, sir. And so this is the position that Thomas just vacated officially. Doesn't sound very good. Was promoted out of?
Yeah.
It was just a few minor changes that were in here.
Pretty much it's the same thing as what we did in the other job descriptions and added in, I think there was a spot where we added in, could answer to the foreman in the absence of the superintendent's position.
Mm-hmm. Is there any recommendation on the grade level? And by you?
Well, right now it falls into the D category, and I don't know how -- usually we start in the 1 to 3 range.
Yep.
What are we talking about?
Are you talking about the job description?
Yeah, because it's --
Or the recommendation?
Because it has the grade level.
Well, no, I'm asking Bill. I'm sorry. Are you talking about the grade of the job description?
Right.
Okay, yeah, so it's D.
It's a D grade.
And I don't think there's any proposal to change that currently.
Correct.
No.
It's staying in the D.
Just the grade, yep.
Okay.
And we put CPR and first aid preferred.
Yes.
But did we determine that was required to achieve within our last?
I was reading that, and I did not go back to any --
What we did in the foremans and what the discussion was?
Yeah, I was trying to go -- I was trying to recall if we set a timeframe. I know we had talked about setting one.
Could we leave it alone in the job description and said we'd come back to it? And we've talked with you about it.
I believe so.
But I don't know that we've made any mass change yet.
We're scheduling those trainings for the spoils, just like you asked.
Right. Okay.
Was it first aid CPR?
Yes.
Yes.
I have an instructor for town employees.
I had mentioned that he should connect with you, because we probably have one. But we haven't gone back and made, like, the mass change to job descriptions to say that, right?
Correct.
I don't think so. I think they've all
Because we left them as is, because we hadn't had the conversation with you. We have since and have started the process, but didn't put it in effect as mandatory. I mean, if that's what we're doing, seems like it -- we're reviewing this one, or we can come back to them all later. I don't know which way you guys want to go.
What if it was easier for you all?
I'm assuming we'd put some language where it was obtained within, if not already. It's a preferred qualification, but it's not required, but it is required to get it. Must obtain and maintain and/or maintain.
Yeah, I think we were throwing out anywhere from 90 days to a year, you know?
Yeah, I don't think there was a set timeframe.
No, and that's where we sort of left it. We didn't come up with what was a reasonable timeframe.
Chief Wonka? What do you think -- we're going to put this in a job description and say they must either maintain or obtain if they don't have CPR or first aid. What do you think is a reasonable amount of time to allow for that to happen? We talking three months?
Six months.
Six months, a year? What's a reasonable amount of scheduling time?
I would think six months would be acceptable, and then, you know, if we're having trouble scheduling instructor
We can always discretion.
Yeah, discretion on that.
CPR is, I believe that one expires every -- it's either two or four years.
I think it used to be two.
Yeah, I think it's still two.
Yeah, okay. So, if we did, I mean, any concerns with six months?
No, not at all. And what we would do, we would just fall under the renewal at the same time that the fire department does, even though if it's six months prior to. That way, it's all done in one class.
Right. You had to get aligned and then continue. Yeah, okay.
I don't care if we want to make an amendment on that this time, or if you just want to amend them all in the future at one, you know, one motion, one time, all descriptions. It doesn't matter, either way. I'm fine with the way it reads now.
Makes sense to do it in the future, amend them all to
We'll just capture that. Read the same date.
We'll look at all the ones that we need to change, and we can change them all at one time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you like to -- you have more questions?
Um, sorry. I think under special requirements, under the Class B, the first bullet, it says or will obtain, must obtain, I think, right? This isn't a will, this is a -- I mean, I know it's semantics a little bit, but I spend too much time with Cory, I think. I would recommend we change that to must or shall, which is one of those more definitive words.
If you're talking about legal, the word's going to be shall.
Must or shall, yeah, shall is, yeah. Are we good with shall?
It's fine.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns? Bring it for another read, or a motion as amended?
There were so few amendments to it, mostly clerical. I'm fine with moving it tonight, if you are.
I am as well.
Make a motion to approve the Equipment Operator Building Maintenance Labor Job Description as amended, effective June 26, 2023.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then we have a recommendation. And then we have a recommendation.
So along with that comes a recommendation for Cody Pease to move into that position. He's been with us since 2023, so I'm sorry, 21, August 17, 2021. He has all his voice and license that are required for this. He's had them. He is CPR and first aid responder certified. He's done pretty much any, any of the jobs with us, whether it's a big project, small projects, including the one on mountain road, catch basin, replays, culverts, opening, closing graves on his own. Yeah, he's, he's an excellent fit, willing to learn and what he doesn't learn, he's willing to, and he's come a long way in a couple of years. So with this, just like we did for Thomas, like to be able to send him to the CDL training school, give him six months to get it, just like we did Thomas. Of course, the cost has gone up on that, just like everything else, just shy of $3,100 right now. It's a 40-hour course. Called down there today. They're scheduling, scheduling into July now. Their middle of July is almost filled up right now, so most likely it'll probably be like a late August, early September. Cody already has vacations scheduled in August and they're doing Thursday, Friday classes only. It's not a Monday through Friday anymore.
So what, is it like three weeks?
Yeah. And he has a scheduled date for July 10th for his permit.
The $3,100, you have that in, in your budget?
Yes.
I figured.
Unless somebody wants to give out donations.
Were you laughing?
Okay, I'll take it out of my budget.
Comments, questions, concerns?
No concerns.
I had no concerns with it. It, it seems like a logical move, you know?
Yes, it does.
From within, in-house move. It's typical. I'm glad we have somebody that fits the bill, that you are comfortable, you know, recommending to move forward. I have no concerns with it.
Thank you.
No concerns either. So, grade D. Now we need to set a step.
Well, which, which is gonna change.
Potentially irrelevant tonight in some ways, but.
Yeah.
So it's why, so I asked for an effective July 1st, knowing where we're at with the fiscal year.
Yeah.
And knowing that nobody knows what the changes will be tonight, I think it's kind of hard right now before the next meeting.
I don't, I don't want to presume, but I expect that based on all the conversations so far, it's been consensus that the table will change.
Yeah, the table, I think the table will change.
A step one today and a step one then will not be the same, but.
Correct. So.
It's gonna be July 1st, so it's probably irrelevant. Step one today will be a step one with whatever gets determined.
Whatever the new table is. I'm wondering if we just hold off, just table this for.
Oh, until later tonight?
A half hour, an hour until we, until we see what happens with the table and then we at least know what we can fill in for a.
Oh, and then set it then?
A step and, a step and rate, whatever that step and rate is if we come to a determination as a collective group and adopt a table.
Because whatever we say will be wrong right now.
Correct. Because we're just setting it to then just change it again anyways. It won't matter. It's irrelevant.
Okay. Works for me.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
That starts at seven and we'll have that discussion.
I was just wondering how long that's going to take and if Glenn has something else tonight or?
I do. I have other stuff tonight, but I'll be around to the end.
Okay.
I would say if we think it's gonna be quick, once.
Right.
We've come to a decision, assuming we do with joint meeting on the table, we can take a moment to make a motion and clear that one up.
Yeah.
And then continue on with the other joint meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Just to get it done.
Yep.
Don't need to wait.
Yeah.
Once, once that's all.
I mean, we can set a, we could do a grade step and rate now and it just will default change. Doesn't really, it's irrelevant. I mean, so.
Less paperwork if you wait, right?
Well, it's just cleaner.
Yeah.
You know what the, you know what the step grade and rate are.
Yeah, we can wait.
That are, that's real, not just a, a current FY '23.
Yeah.
I'm gonna recommend we still say tentatively because we'll let the finance team finalize everything in the end, but we'll, we'll give numbers to it, but we can just say, you know, I think, I think we're there within a penny or two.
Correct. There's always a rounding error.
There is. That math. Okay, so we'll.
We'll just table that.
Table that until after the wage discussion?
Yep.
In terms of making any appointment or motion for, for setting that promotion rate? Anything else on that topic? No? Review of the highway plow truck procurement.
So after, after annual town meeting, I sat down with Brian, we specked up the truck, we sent it out through the state contract and seven vendors, I believe.
Four.
Four, four vendors, I believe, four. Some of them were owned by the same company, is what we found out afterwards. We, we had one, one response from Colonial Ford and J.C. Madigan for the upfitting part of it. And under budget, we had 125,000, was approved for it and it came in at 113, 809. They don't even have pricing for the 2024 models yet and now the ordering, order bank won't even open until probably somewhere around the second week of July. So then they won't even have prices until then. So in this price, they put in a $6,000 escalator for a model year change in the build. So we got a base price of $47,325 just for the cabin chassis and additional $57,488 for the build. This is pretty much identical to the last truck, just not the toolbox behind the cab. So when we found out he was the only responder, I gave him a call on Thursday to let him know that, yes, sir, I think our due date was June 12th.
Correct.
I think is what it was. Told him that we hadn't forgot about him, there's been a lot of town business stuff going on, let him know that we're meeting with the board tonight and that he was the only responder. So I asked him for any further update and the updates were the same. Asked if we were stuck on the color because they just had a trailer of 2023 cabin chassis come in, fits the same spec as the one that we were looking for, just that it's in the green that we have had in the fleet for years. The one that we had purchased last year was blue because they could not get any and it was a 2020 leftover that was found on the lot after two years. So Brian had had me ask what it would take to paint the truck blue. So it's about a three to five week wait time and additional $7,500 for the paint. Or we probably say, could save maybe $1,500 if we waited, depending on what the upcharge was from a 23 to 24 model. Right now they don't even have an expected delivery date if it was a 24, because they're still receiving 23s for builds from last year also. So it could be springtime, it could be next summer, it could be late fall. They don't, they're not putting dates on them yet. So we have a couple of options. Wait and go what was as spec with no timeframe. They have one on the lot that they have our name on it, on hold until after tonight's Pay to have it painted, which would be $7,500 more than what, what this price, this 47,325 So like 54 something, 54 and change.
Do you have a recommendation?
Brian and I had spoke about this and yes, as we want everything probably to stay uniform, right now we have only one truck that's blue. If we wait, if we keep everything green and move forward to green the way we're going, then when that one comes around, then it goes back to green. If you all want them blue, to stay blue, then this truck is a sure thing in a quicker build than waiting to order one. What would you like to see driving up and down your roads?
Well, there wouldn't be a request for a truck if you didn't need one, so.
Correct.
I, I suspect it's a no-brainer that we go with the recommendation of, of what's on the lot and get it painted and ready to go. Sooner we get it on the road, the better it will be for, for you, so.
Okay.
So we have one blue and how many green today?
We have one blue and four greens.
Four greens, huh?
Do we, do we really care if it's blue?
I don't care.
I mean, for six, for $6,000, $7,000, do we care?
I don't.
I'd rather just save it.
I don't care.
I don't care.
If they're the same color or not. I look at some towns and, you know, they have a, a white truck, a blue truck, a gray truck. As long as there's an emblem on the side and it tells you what town it's from and you, it's marked up properly.
They're all still blue, so.
As long as it's gonna take care of roads and do the work it needs to do.
It'll still plow, it'll still do everything it needs to do, no matter if it's dark green or dark blue.
Yes.
Save the 7,500 bucks.
So are you gonna come back with an updated one or we gonna make a motion based on what we heard tonight? I just want to double check the numbers. So you're saying the one that's currently available?
Be 109, 258.
How about not?
At 44 cents.
How about not to exceed 110? Just to, yep.
How many cents was that?
44.
That's mine is the 7,500?
No, the 7, the 7,500 was on top of, on top of this price.
Didn't sound like there was any concerns with that.
I don't have any concerns.
I'll make a motion, we award the procurement for the Ford F-550 plow truck to Colonial Ford of Marlboro, Mass. 013, 1752, and I'm out not to exceed $110,000 even for a 2023 model year, adjusted from the original spec and in green, not blue. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
And move that we authorize Brian Smith to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Was that the last one you had on tonight?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Before you get settled, John, you might as well come on up. We'll jump into review of the proposed revision to the Assistant Treasurer's job description. I was trying to catch you before you actually got comfortable. Thank you for joining us tonight. So we saw the memo and the updated job description last meeting. It's currently a C, grade C? The supervisor responsibility, is that just a theory? I mean, it's theoretical at this point, but, but that job level would.
Correct, yep.
The office currently has a vacancy in the clerk position, but the office used to have a, a third position.
Yep.
How long has Jean been with us?
She's been with us for, in this role, over five years.
And what is her current education?
I actually, I don't know. Her qualifications. She was in the position when I started, so I'm not quite sure. Brian, do you know?
No.
The only thing I'm looking for in here is typically if we're a, a grade D, oftentimes we're looking for them to have the ability to step in if their supervisor's not around, but there's no, there's no language to that in here.
Sorry, that, yeah, that definitely should be added, but she absolutely does.
Assume the, assume the role in your absence.
Well, I think I actually, in the job description, I think I did.
Unless I'm missing it.
On the very end, assumes, assumes my duties when I'm not in the office.
Oh, it's under essential functions.
Okay.
15. Okay, I looked right over it. That's, that's one of the pieces I was looking for and it's one of the new added ones.
Am I correct in that individuals who are required to be bonded, are they required to do that themselves?
Yes, she's required. She's required to be bonded, yep.
What, what cost is that?
I think it's a couple.
You're bound?
Yeah.
And it's a few hundred dollars per employee.
Yeah, sorry.
And our office handles that for all the employees that need to be bonded.
It looks like we've always been putting it in essential functions, not in an upper section, which I didn't think was the case, but I can't find it anywhere except essential functions in our other.
About assuming. About assuming the role.
Yeah, in our other, like, in the second.
Yep.
Second and command type roles.
I don't have any concerns with it.
Bill?
No.
Who one of you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, approve the Assistant Treasurer position as amended with a grade level of D. Effective, uh, effective date of 6/26/2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, with that, it is 7:03. I will call the joint meeting with the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee to order.
I did it again?
Not on, not on the chairs?
Are you really?
And now Otis, Otis has to change now.
Oh, goodness. And we were just talking before the meeting about taking July to put some effort into a little better layout, a little clearer we need to. We good, sir? Okay, I'll give you a minute. Okay. Thank you. Uh, so we'll start with, uh, continuing the discussion regarding wage adjustments for FY '24. So last meeting, we, uh, kinda came away with the guidance that we were looking to see what a 2% base wage and 3% step change with the revised 10-step table, as well as a 4% base with a 3% step change. And confirm that the estimated overall impacts that Scott and I had run through quickly on the fly were, were generally accurate. And we received that data from the treasurer.
So, if you're ready for-
Yep, please.
Input. Uh, there was a memo. Thank you, Brian, for putting together the memo that captures the work that's been done. I had mentioned at the last discussion of this, you know, the, uh, the difference and the, the potential, uh, cost to the two different tables. My only concern is, and so I'll, I'll start the conversation by, um, looking back at the comparative throughout the county. I'm actually leaning in favor of the 4% base wage adjustment, because it does put us in a, a position where it's very advantageous to keep people here long-term, as opposed to just getting them in for the first few years and then they find somewhere else to go. I just wanna make sure that we have the ability to, uh, fund it. And these are estimates. These are not actual, you know, uh, dollar amounts. But it does come up, you know, on, on an estimate, a, a hair shy for, for the first fiscal year. Obviously, we would build it in for, um, '25 and beyond, but if we're making this change now, after we've done the annual town meeting for '24, if we make these changes effective July 1, we just have to make sure that we can, uh, adjust on the fly with our own internal budget to make sure we can accomplish that. That's my only concern, is the one year finding the, uh, the funding source internally to, to get there. And, you know, if we think we can, if we think we can pinch a little bit off of somewhere else and make those changes, I think it, it makes sense to put the money in the wages where it needs to be. If you go back to several years ago, we sat, I think it was downstairs at the town hall and talked about our goal was to make sure that we are attracting new talent that wants to be here, incentivizing people to stay here for longevity and be competitive in the upper echelon of what the county is offering. That table gets it there.
Thoughts, comments?
I saw it, 2%, 4%, I didn't see 3, so it's somewhere in the, somewhere in the middle, but it's okay. But my question about the 4%, and I agree with everything you said. I want good people to come here, they want, just wanna stay here. I, I know, on that side of the coin, I'm right with you. On the other side of the coin, it was mentioned, I don't, I don't have anything to back it up, but it was mentioned that somebody might be getting a 20% increase. I don't know anybody ever got a 20% increase anywhere. Maybe that's not the case. Do you know roughly with the, the combination of the, of the wage base and the step change, will people be getting a 20% raise?
The, the minimum based on doing this, I can check back to the list, is basically 3 plus, 3 plus 4. Like, we're jumping two steps, so 3% each for steps, and then 4% for the base. Basically gives you 10% is the minimum. However, it compounds, because we adjusted each step 3% from 2%. So, the higher you are in the new steps, the more, you know, you're gonna get 1% more for each additional step that they're already there, because of the new table, right? So, it's not exactly that math, but if someone was at, you know, a step 10, they're gonna get 9 or 10% plus the 10%. Because they've, because it compounds, but you-
Yeah, I just wanna be clear. When we talk about the net effect of what somebody might see, all of these employees are gonna see those steps anyways. So by doing a step adjustment, if we're saying in FY '24, we want to, we wanna move people further down in steps, and we, it's their money that they're gonna get eventually over a 10-year, you know, step increase. It's allowing them to get it faster, because the need of that increase in, uh, you know, inflation that everybody had been talking about, those steps were gonna be incurred by the town regardless. It's allowing the person to access it one year earlier. So instead of waiting another year to see FY '25's step, they're getting '24 and '25. It just moves them down the table faster. The net result is, over a 10-year period, is pennies on the dollar, when it, when you talk about the net effect to the town. We're just gonna see it earlier. If you average this out over 11 years, it would be a couple thousand dollars difference, you know, annually. It's just allowing them to access it sooner. It gives the net effect and the feel to, uh, alleviate the burden that we're all feeling when you go to buy stuff now. And I think that's what we're looking for.
That explanation satisfies me, between what you both said. And hopefully it'll satisfy taxpayers too, because everybody's paying more when you go to the store, whatever store you go to. And, uh, in these times, telling somebody, oh, you get 2%, is like sending them backwards three steps. So, I'm, I'm in favor of what you, what you're proposing.
I mean, the, the table change of a 4% with 3% steps, that's the change we're looking at. Where we place people is not a, that's a, that's a budgetary and placement change that we do here. The three of us look at it and say, we wanna move people, uh, on the steps. We wanna change their grade. We wanna adjust the, the, you know, a promotion, a, a, a job description. It got lumped into the same conversation, just to show that the net effect of what it might be. But the table change is really what we're looking at. Where people get placed on that was an idea that the three of us had come up with to say, how do we keep some similarity in movement? How do we, uh, see a net effect that people will realize in FY '24? That'll help, help offset. So, just want clarity on that.
Just a question. You were talking about, um, over 10 years, the difference would be pennies on the dollar. We're, we're not gonna be evaluating this every 10 years though, right?
No, we're gonna be-
We're gonna be front-loading it and then front-loading it again, when we evaluate it again in four or five years?
We have no idea what we would do for adjustments in four or five years.
We wouldn't go down, though.
Well, no, I mean, no, nobody goes down.
Right, but I just, you mentioned 10 years, and I'm thinking it's-
Well, only because we're talking about a 10-step. So, you know, you're talking about a 10-steps. If this were to play out for 10 steps, the person that was going to be on a step 5, going to a 6, but instead, we're talking about potentially moving them to a 7, right? They're going to cap out faster, one year faster. So they won't have that extra step, because they got it this year instead of at the end of their career. They're getting it sooner. They're just moving down the table faster. That's why I said, you know, either way, if you did a double step this year for everybody, they would reach that same mile marker in nine years instead of 10 years. If you didn't do the double step and you waited that 10th year, they were gonna hit that mile marker anyways. Whatever the table looks like, if we reevaluate it in 7, that mile marker's still gonna be the same. You see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying.
Either, either way, they're gonna get a step every single year. We can't, you know, we don't, we don't have mechanisms to stop them from getting steps. Their years of service allows them that opportunity. We're just expediting, uh, within the own, within the table that we're, we've created, to allow them to see, to realize that one year sooner.
And I think, Ben, to your point about length of time, I know just in talking about it in the past, the idea was not reviewing it again for a minimum of five years. But definitely, you know, unless something drastic change in the economy, of course. But ideally, reviewing it in 7. So we do have that kind of-
The 5 to 7.
Plan, that within that 5 to 7, this will, in its entirety, will be looked at again.
Just, so, just to, for everybody listening, to be clear, that is the table, that's the job descriptions, that's the placement within there. That is, um, how we compare to the, our fellow, our surrounding communities. But annually, we still look at base wage adjustments. You know, that's still an annual review, uh, and I've even made the suggestion to the chair that, uh, in future years, we look at base wage adjustment in one of the first blocks of the budget discussion, not the last. Because it seems like every year, we discuss it at the end, and it becomes what's left of the pie, rather than what do we think is a fair market rate? So, you know, just changing how we, how we view where that falls in. But that, that's for next year's budget table.
Do we ever look at, um, the perceived value of the benefits package since-
Yes.
Especially with surrounding communities, it seems like we're usually pretty high.
We're actually, uh-
A few months ago.
Yeah, that's, that was what started this. Uh, we looked at an entire table. We look at, um, benefits that they're getting, what we pay for insurance versus other communities. A lot of communities are actually upping their game, uh, and increasing their value, uh, of what they're contributing. It's not, you know, it used to be everybody was 50%, 50/50, and we were 84, 85, 86. You're seeing a lot of 75s, and, you know, so it's not as, uh, much of a disparity. But yes, we were looking at, when we crunched the numbers, we looked at a dollar value and looked at what that is and what that compares to, as part of the discussion.
Other comments, questions?
We recommend the, um, 4% base wage adjustment with 3% step change for general government and fire department. Would that be an appropriate motion?
Would be, if you'd like it to be one.
I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay, is there a second motion to stay up?
Other discussion? Different motion?
No, it's just, uh, when you said 20%, I mean, that threw me for a loop.
There's, there's nobody that would see it.
That number was way off.
First of all, it's 4, 3, and 3. That's what the changes we're discussing, right? What that effect is for an individual employee is based on the years they've already earned and done. What step they're on, plus two steps, or whatever jump is required based on shortening the number of steps in the table. That impact is what they've already earned, right? So hypothetically, if someone's gonna be a step 5 on the new table, they've earned that step. So if that means that's that many percent higher than 4, 3, 3, it's because they've already earned those steps. Just like if we, we did a 2% last year, every step got 2% and it was compounded. It started at the bottom, and they add 2%, and it's really just slightly more every step you go up, because it compounds. So it's compounding effects because of the way a table works and the time that they've already served, so. You know, that, that I would just caution to separate the two. And I think that's maybe what Scott was trying to get at, is really all we're doing is what we normally look at, which is the first step, and then what is the distance between. And then how, the math that works to make the full table, and how that compounds over time, is the nature of the table we've been using. So anything different would be proposing changing the table in another way. I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but that's, that's true every year. If we make a change, it's gonna impact someone at a higher step differently than it impacts someone at a lower step. I go back to Dan's dollar versus percent, to some degree. I mean, that's really what it is. So, the effective amount is various based on time served.
May I add to the discussion?
That, if, if, much, much of this is a consequence of going from 15 steps to 10. And if you don't make some adjustment, as, as is being suggested here, the person has been here for five, six years, and they've moved up a few steps, they're gonna be paying them the same as, uh, somebody who walks in the door. And that's unfair, I think. Certainly, the person who's been here a few years would think it's unfair. So you've got enough to make those adjustments and bump them up a couple steps, and if that gives them an extra percentage or two, that's fair. That's where they should be. And I certainly agree, this constant turmoil of turnover, it's natural. I mean, if I work someplace, I look and see is it someplace better to give me more money or more, more benefits, or I like better. But we'd like them to stay here, rather than just train them and then go off somewhere to some other town, whether it's in the county or out, that, that, we can't compare to the whole country, but if I was looking for something better, we'd like to give them enough goods so they stay here. Because it costs us money when they leave. We have to retrain and re, you know, just, whether it's the academy or wherever we have to send people, or CDL, ICE, whatever it is. I just think this is a fair thing. If you believe something else, I'm certainly willing to entertain discussion on a different motion, but we may reach a point where we'll remake the same motion. Be good if we do something, though.
I think too, it's important to note, there's kind of two separate things at play here. One is truly just looking at a base wage adjustment for this fiscal year for the employees. And the other is honoring the commitment that we made three years ago when we implemented this program, that we would review it in three years and see what works and doesn't work, and make changes as necessary. So in order to keep, at least for me, in order to keep this fresh, so to speak, there was too many steps, and the percentage in between the steps was just not gonna be a longevity kind of thing. So changing, you know, the number and the percentage in between, I think we needed to do in order to stay competitive, to keep the employees that we have. And so I think, well, yes, our employer- And so I think, well, yes, our employees are going to benefit from that. There's no way around that. We couldn't make changes that are going to suffice us for the next five to seven years, but say to the employees, oh, yeah, we're not going to give you any extra pay from that. So I do think there is two really distinct, separate things happening that we're changing a program that we found has a few things that don't work the greatest. And so we're implementing change to fix that. And then we're looking at a base wage of adjustment for our employees for this fiscal year. And so they are kind of separate issues. And that changing of the scale, again, hopefully not for another five to seven years. So this year, the impact of the budget is kind of an anomaly. Because it just happens to be the time when we are honoring the commitments that we made.
And I checked too. Scott's right, there was a discrepancy in this, and there's no 20%.
Yeah, there is.
Nothing's 20%.
Not even close.
There's some split rate because of rolls, and it threw it off if you do it right.
Yeah.
But you know, I wanted to make sure that was not the case. Apparently, it's not.
It's not.
Your tax...
I was thinking about that whole...
It was my mistake too. I see where it is, and it was not. It's not.
I asked the question in good conscience because the people watching the show are paying the bills.
Yes.
Nobody wants to give 20%? I don't think this does. If there's another motion, I think the finance committee should recommend something. If you want to do something different, or remake that motion, which somebody might want to do.
If you'd like to make a motion, Dan.
Well, I would move that we recommend, because we don't decide, we just recommend, the 4% base wage adjustment with 3% step change for general government and fire department.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions or notes? Any notes? Three yeses, one no, sir.
Ben was the second.
Ben was the second.
Ben was the second, yeah.
One question I did want to ask you.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, we had discussed this at our FinCon meeting as well about the fact that our numbers jumped up this year because of inflation. Are we going to build in any kind of trigger with this that we can count on so that we know that if inflation goes up above a certain percent, we're going to be considering, not throwing this out the window, but going up and above and beyond what we've said that we were going to do?
I don't know if, I don't know if it's been discussed in this group setting. But I think after looking at this and what we did last year and just reflecting, because it was our commitment, you know, three years ago to come back and see how the whole thing's been working. And there's clearly a handful of adjustments here. I think the other one seems to be that we need to look at whether there is a, you know, an overall adjustment needed based on inflation and those things each year. So just coming together as part of that, I think to what Scott was alluding to earlier, you know, he had said, can we put this on the front end of budgeting instead of the back end? I think it's a great idea. And part of that will be reviewing those, that data and deciding, is there an overall, you know, inflation adjuster or something like that that we need to put in that year?
A threshold, maybe, that we would know about?
I don't know if I'd want to deem to set one personally. I would say we just plan to do that as part of our budget kickoff reviews, is discuss it, see if we feel there's a number that something needs to get reviewed, and we can go from there.
I mean, annually, when you're looking at, you know, what we used to refer to as a COLA, base wage adjustments, it takes all of those factors in play. It takes, you know, what is the current market? What is job comparisons? You can do that very quickly. It's not a full comprehensive. But part of that is, what's the inflation rate in the economy, you know? And we look at that when we're looking at base wage adjustments every year, you know? To set a trigger, I have seen language like that before. It gets very convoluted.
It does.
And you lock yourself in. It's more of a, I see that more in collective bargaining than you do in just straight municipal employees that are non-bargaining unit. Or you see that a lot at the state level, when they're looking at very large budgets and they want, you know, drivers. But that's because they're not going to, they're not going to give anything unless they hit a mark that allows them to say they're going to. It's, I don't think it's necessary because we do look at base wage adjustments annually, or at least we're, as of last year and this year. And every future year going forward, we're going to look at base wage adjustments annually anyways. I wouldn't be in favor of putting any escalator clauses in it. That's what the 3% steps are. I mean, a step is just a guaranteed base wage adjustment. If the, if the appointing authority, the select board makes no changes, anybody who's not on the top step is going to be guaranteed a 3% step. So if we're derelict in our duty and we give nothing, there is at least a 3% increase annually.
The other, the other thing, just coming, circling back to the memo before the board makes final decision here on, what we're doing was discussion about breaking out public works, or specifically highway, and buildings and grounds into its own schedule. And at the moment, that would be the, the grades that are used currently out of the current general government, right, is the recommendation? As they are, but just those specific grades, because it doesn't utilize all the grades in general government. Is that something, anyone has concerns one way or another?
I don't have concern with it. I think you, if you can have some finite department-level tables, that's fine. To have one table that spans from clerical through laborers, through, you know, rec, through everything, it just seems to be a bit overdone, overused. So having some more smaller, broken-out tables, but utilizing these same figures to start. Because you might find in years to come, the demand of a certain job is elevated, whereas others are not. And so you don't want to be looking at just one table. It's more work on our end, but when you're looking at wage scales throughout the town, instead of having, you know, just a couple of tables, you might have four or five. But I'm okay with that.
I would agree with Scott. And I think pretty much the finance committee on that issue, that one issue. I haven't heard any good explanation as to why we would want to do that and what the benefit would be. So I'm quite comfortable, as it is, we were broken up in that we were going to have two unions to begin with, about, actually, three. When you look at the school and wastewater and then police, and that's just the start. So I don't know where it's going to go in the future, and nobody does. But I would hate to see it broken out any more than it already is, which is a difficult task to have to negotiate with several different departments that are minute in size to begin with. So I'm in favor of not breaking out at all in any way at this time.
Finance, have any take on that, one way or another?
Does that have a financial impact? You want the finance committee, so there's really not much for us to say about it.
It's a clerical. It's not a, it's not a financial, it's a clerical. It may have finance implications in the future if one table is adjusted, another is not. If there's, you know, but that's, that's future. Nothing in this year.
I was going to say, I think it makes sense. As jobs expand or change, it doesn't seem like having that permit in with general government makes sense to me. So I would be in favor of having them have their own table.
I, I agree. Yes, it's another table, but I don't, it isn't just keeping that straight. I don't think it's that big of a lift, because more of what we're doing is usually in aggregate or a specific targeted reason. So I would be okay with that as well. Other discussion on any of the above for the board? And if not, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend the wage compensation tables with a 4% base wage adjustment, modifying the number of steps to 10, and incrementally increasing each step to a 3% step annually, effective July 1, 2023.
For what tables?
Oh, sorry, thank you. For the fire department and general government.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we could always further that conversation about, you know, splitting tables at any time. Unless you want to do it now.
I have no problem doing it now while we're making changes, but that's, either way. So if you want to make a motion, let's not.
I'll make a motion. We can discuss it further if we have to. I'm going to make a motion that we create a new wage compensation schedule effective July 1, 2024, labeled the highway and building and grounds, utilizing the same table format and amounts of the previously approved general government compensation schedule.
You said 2024? Did you make 2023?
I did. Thank you.
And that would be by pulling out the, the grade, only the grades that we have job descriptions in those departments for?
Yeah.
I will second. Any more discussion on that change?
Yeah, you know, I just think it makes sense to pull them out. It's a unique department. It's finite, and it really only increases our tables from currently four tables to five tables. And it allows a grouping of like jobs, like descriptions on a table. So I'm in favor of it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Passes. And that'll also be for July 1.
And just as a note, what, for everyone, what we've approved is the percentages. We're going to let the financial team go through and verify that everything's right as they do their process for year-end and switch over. They've generally reviewed these. I'm sure they're pretty close, within a few pennies. But it's just a little foot and out. There may be a little bit of rounding error somewhere in there. So these are not necessarily exact, within the penny.
Anything else on wage adjustments at this point?
Talked about some footnotes for next year budget cycle, which I think sound good, and we can talk about them as we get into that again. Before we continue on with other joint business, we just want to return to one that we had tabled pending this decision. So this is a discussion regarding equipment operator, building maintenance labor position, and setting a rate and step for that promotion.
Discussion around that, based on the new table?
Do we have current step?
Two, maybe?
Is it three as of?
Three, the first?
Four.
Two. Yeah, it should be three.
We'll have it in a moment.
So today, it's a two, on the first, it would be a three.
Which means on the new one that we just approved, it would be a one. Effective July 1.
Right.
And I think it's just...
Because if it were four or less, it would jump to one.
Correct.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Sorry, I just got to get back to my other document here. Would you like it with a dollar amount, but also, or just a grade and step? Because I know you said it's subject to verification through the financial team.
I have no preference. Do we normally, I think we just normally, well, we mention what it is, yeah.
We usually mention a dollar amount.
I mean, we can anecdotally say approximately.
All right. I know I had asked for that to be tabled until we saw if we were able to approve a table. And I just think it makes sense to make this effective July 1 and do all the changes on the same day.
I would agree.
It's only a few days away, so.
And probably just noting your, if you're making the motion, that it's out of the new table, out of the highway and building maintenance table.
All right. Might be a long motion, because there's a lot in there. So this was a previous discussion related to the appointment of an employee with a promotion to a new position. So I make a motion that we approve the promotion of Cody Pease to the position of equipment operator, buildings, maintenance, labor, grade D, step 1, effective July 1, 2023, with an approximate rate of $27.25, subject to verification through the financial team of the Town of Irving, utilizing the newly approved highway, building, and grounds table that goes into effect on July 1. Got all that? I think I missed anything you need? Yeah, actually, I did miss some stuff. I'm assuming we're going to do probation...
Have we, have we done those on that?
For promotions?
I can't remember now on that. Obviously, contingent on successful completion of the CDL.
Six-month, yeah.
And the CDL in there.
Contingent on the, subject to a six-month, no, contingent on obtaining CDL within a six-month post-hire or post-promotion.
Second?
And a six-month probationary period. Right?
Did you get that?
Friendly.
Bill, did you hear that?
Subject to a six-month probationary...
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. There was a lot in that motion.
As a paragraph.
New tables, new wages, new everything.
Your second stand on the amended?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, back to joint topics. We'll jump down to the discussion of the IP mail demolition. Mariah, you're rejoining? Thank you. You get that, Brian? Okay, Mariah, come on. And so wanted to bring this back to have a discussion about what our plan is with regards to bringing this forward as a, I think we still need to come back and finalize. I don't recall if we finalized which option we were going to bring for an override, and then, you know, when and how, and how does that affect what we have for funding, right? Is it kind of high level, some of the concerns that I've heard and questions? Being the $600,000... Being the $600,000 that we have towards it, currently.
So, you had sent an email, uh, just recently saying that in reaching out regarding that $600,000, that they're not, as long as we're showing that we're, it's still on the table and we're still moving forward, they're not setting a timeline of use it or lose it. So that as long as, as long as we are still engaging in a meaningful conversation and making steps towards some solution, they're not stipulating that they're gonna set a date and pull the funding. So it's not a, a crunch where there was a thought that there might be a crunch of, you know, we have to do this very quickly, or we're gonna lose over half a, half a million dollars, which nobody wants to do.
Yeah.
I'm not certain of where we fold in the IP mill, so I know, I, I know your concern was where it falls, uh, in timing wise. We did have the, um, public forum, and overwhelmingly, I think, all but a couple of people said, you know, they'd be in favor of a two and a half override for a, um, capital exclusion, one time, putting it on a tax bill. So, where we do that timing, does, are we planning on having a discussion of FY23 amended? Are we gonna fold it into that one? If we're not doing one, are we gonna move it to our longer range discussion of FY24 and beyond, and, and fold all that into one larger one, or is it gonna be a standalone topic? I don't know.
Just slight adjustment, you mean FY24 or FY25 and beyond?
No, because we had-
23 is over in seven days, three days, four days.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, sorry. Uh, to FY24, 25.
Messing those up all night, my speaker, so-
Yeah, I know, but sorry, it's-
We're too close to the end of it, I think?
It's been a long day already, you are absolutely right.
Okay.
Adjustment to FY24, which we had talked about potentially doing. We haven't come to any sort of real fruitful conversation, we asked department heads to come back and, and look at that information, and, um, if we are, does that make sense to reintroduce what was already talked about at that public forum, that showed overwhelming support, that there would be a, a prop two and a half capital exclusion on whatever warrant we're creating, if there's already gonna be an override for FY24, should we feel we need to get there? I'm not ready to say that we're doing one, because I don't, we haven't even had that preliminary discussion. We've had the idea that we had made cuts, and that we'd like to re-instate some of those cuts, but we haven't had any discussion on whether or not that would constitute a two and a half or not, and what that looks like. So, I don't, don't know where to go forward with that, I just, that was the groundwork of where we're at. It's a little, for me, it's a little early to say until we have that conversation of whether or not we're looking at an FY24 adjustment via override, whether or not we place this one in conjunction with that, or if we just make it part of the larger FY25 and beyond. I'm leaning towards the FY25 and beyond, um, but I, that's preliminary, because I haven't had any feedback yet from department heads on FY24.
Yeah. So you're talking two different things, you're talking override to replenish what was cut, then the, the exclusion, so it'd be two separate articles, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Either way, whether we're talking about, uh, we've talked about long range plan, FY25 and beyond, looking at potentially, uh, the long range needs of the town, and whether or not we would need an override anyways, but that is a very early conversation. We need to sit down with, you know, finance committee, uh, the select board, the school committee, and look at where we're at in the, in the bigger picture, over the next, you know, five years or so, and, and what, what do we need to sustain? And can we do it within our current levy limits or not, and are we proposing an override to get there, to fill that need? I don't know, you know, based on the numbers, there's so many numbers flowing, you know, flowing around out there, we see anomalies every year. Once we start that conversation, I don't even know if we're gonna need an FY25 and beyond override. It's, you have to have that conversation before you can make assumptions on whether or not that, that's gonna happen. So, either way, this would get flumped in with some override, should we need one, or it just ends up being its own standalone. If we find out that FY24 doesn't need adjustment, and FY25 and beyond doesn't need adjustment, we still had overwhelming, uh, desire from those in attendance that evening to create an override, capital exclusion for this one item.
Personally, I don't wanna wait another fiscal year.
I mean, I think we should do it in fiscal year 24, and, and, like Peter said, there's two things, there's two different things, and that's the debt exclusion and the two and a half override. So, separate them out, and, and take care of the IP plant with the debt exclusion, and be done with it. And then, you can just deal with the whole rest of it. And not that that's any small thing, but...
Just a clarification, I, capital exclusion. Nobody wants to pay a bank percentages on a, on a debt. I know. Listen, I know, I just, you know.
I, I don't have them in front of me, but I feel like the second most favorite option was the longest possible debt exclusion we offered, uh, offered as well. So, and I've heard some comments after of people mentioning that, and I, I don't remember that we've all come to a decision on which one-
No, we didn't.
Or, or is there more than one option? So maybe, maybe either, but I mean, I agree, I, I think we should do it in FY24, one way or another, we should put it out there, and either it gets voted for or voted down. My, I, I think it goes back to reluctance and agreement, I think we all had to not put it on the June coming up on Wednesday, is if we're going to do, potentially propose an FY24 budget override as well. I feel like putting them in separate meetings, just, I, I mean, as a taxpayer, we want clarity, how many overrides and what does that all mean? I think it should all be in the same meeting, so for me, I, I think we, I don't wanna wait to FY25, but I think we should wait until we come to some decision on what we need to do for FY24 budget adjustments, if any, and if that means an override, what does that look like? Put those together in a meeting?
And if it doesn't meet an override, then we still-
Bring the IP mill.
We still pull one forward for the IP mill. I mean, the voters at that meeting had said, we're in favor of doing something to get rid of it, and we're willing to find a way to pay for it with an override. So, regardless, I think that's gonna move forward, you know?
I just don't wanna wait until fiscal year 25.
Yeah, so we're looking at a timeframe, because nothing goes down. You know, we could be looking more than what we were actually proposing here. So, how long do we wait?
What was the ask for the department heads at our last meeting? To come back, was it early July?
We asked them to put together a list of not only the cuts that, that were reduced as FY24 budget process was developed, but additionally, what services would they be looking to either implement or restore? For your consideration, if that was part of a overall comprehensive FY24, and you wanted to understand what the impact was over five years.
Right. My, my question was timing, what did we, did we have what you asked for July 10th?
I don't have a firm date yet, but yeah, you wanted the responses back for July, so that you all work in your 90-day window.
We had talked about, you know-
My optimistic 90-day window, I don't want to say you all.
Uh, optimistic version of 90 days from, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, end of summer, early fall in FY24, and saying, let's, let's close this up and figure out where we're at, because we, if we are looking at something that requires a, a operational change in FY24, we need to do it very soon, so that we can actually set the tax rate. That's why the 90-day window came in, so we're, we're not trying to drag this out into, you know, December, January, February. At that point, we would roll it into 25, and we're not trying to do that, so. End of summer, ideally, very early fall, when you're, you know, no, that's still end of summer, September. Right, Bill?
Great.
By that point, not only should we have obviously feedback from all the departments, but we should also have a decent understanding of the closeout of FY23, and what, if anything, there isn't free cash.
Right.
We usually have that work done in September, in order to submit to DOR for October, so.
Okay. But the conversation about operational needs in 24 was, in, in my thought, it was gonna be next month. We're hoping to get that information back from the department heads in the next, you know, couple of weeks. We have a meeting, I think we're scheduled July 10th?
Yeah, I was figuring it'd probably be one after, I don't know if we'll be ready by then.
So, but somewhere, somewhere in the month of July, to, to bring up that conversation about the FY24, and should there need to be any amendments, we can start that conversation very early on, so that we have the summer to work on it.
So, are we all in agreement that we should be talking about the IP mill override on an STM, say, September, October, is what I'm hearing? That's the latest out, happening, whether there's a budget adjustment on there or not?
Yeah, I, I think, I agree, we want to wait more years, because costs just go up and then they go down, for the IP mill part of it.
Yep.
But also encourage that we work as quickly as we're able, on, you know, what was cut out of the, the 24 budget. I, I, I don't see how we can, I don't have a crystal ball, I keep saying that, well, I do, but don't bring it with me. But, I don't have a crystal ball for, for this, but where we took so much from free cash to put into the school, and we, and we just didn't have any more capacity, I don't see how we could possibly avoid having some kind of an override for the request anyways, for the operational budget, to just ask people, you know, what do you want? Do you want us to have these services, or you want the, say, the police cadet program, or other, other things that department heads really need? Do the taxpayers support having them? And we shouldn't wait till, you know, most of the way through the fiscal year before we ask that. So I think, I think we should work on that diligently as quickly as we can, but also, the IP mill is sort of a separate thing, in my mind. It's so separate, there's very little choice on that one. As much as people wanna go and vote no all the time on, on things that cost money, the alternative is just, it stays there, and it's a horrendous liability to us. And what, if something goes wrong down there, it costs us a whole lot more than tearing it down, which is a whole different category than, than, you know, do we ask people if they wanna give department heads what they need, or not? I think we should go for both. Perhaps not together, but both.
So we agree, in agreement, it should be on the same STM? Right?
I don't know.
I'm in favor of doing it at the same, I think the, the idea of, uh, first of all, we haven't done a proposition two and a half, I don't know, ever. I don't think the town, I know, I know other municipalities do them-
Do them every year.
And they're becoming more, uh, more frequent, uh, over the last year or two, you know, and some towns will do multiple. The idea that you hold a special town meeting, you ask for a two and a half override for capital expenses, three months later, you're back at a, a special town meeting, asking for a two and a half override for operational needs, and then, for that one fiscal year, and then, six months later, you're asking for a two and a half override for a five-year plan. It just, it seems to be like, let's get our ducks in our, in a row before we go and create a warrant and ask for an override. I think we know the, the IP, IP mill is going to be added to whatever warrant is created, I don't think it should be a standalone. I think it'll have just as much traction, there, there seem to be an overwhelming desire to see that ISO go away, and, and, you know, liability go away, so I think just for clarity that we have a plan, and we're putting it forward, and it's one override that has a couple, a one override warrant with a couple of votes on it, for various components. That's my proposal, I agree with you, you're the same proposal.
So, I'm thinking about that, and we have the election, we have the vote piece too, ballot vote piece that we have to do, so we may have to push for September or earlier. And I think to your point, Dan, as, as quick as we can, we're not waiting till then, it's as soon as we can get the rest of the data in order to, to do the budget side if we need to, and, and bring it forward. We can, we can revisit when we're drafting that, right beforehand, about what are we putting out there? Is it just a debt exclusion one time, or which, you know, go back to the options? Unless we want to do that tonight, but I don't know if you're all prepared to wanna have that conversation, we'll think on it a little, and bring it back when it's ready to finalize for the warrant, later summer.
My suggestion is later summer, when we have the options back in front of us, and there's a little more time to digest it, and refamiliarize ourselves with it. I mean, the idea that it's either a one-time, you know, uh, capital exclusion, or a multi-year debt exclusion, we can, I think we can have that conversation as we get closer.
I think that's it for IP then, unless you had any further questions for us, we didn't answer.
Um, are you all open to making, continuing to do outreach and getting input on the options, and kind of bringing a summary of that to you whenever you ultimately have the discussion where you're gonna determine what kind of capital or debt exclusion you're doing?
Options of, just wanted to be clear that we're speaking the same language.
Input from?
So, one of the reasons it would be helpful for me to have this timeline that you all just discussed, is because of doing kind of outreach. Summertime is the best time to get public input on things. So, I guess I'm, you kind of just said that you're waiting until you actually have to make a decision on the amount and how you're going to be funding this. So, do you all want me to still propose all of these options to the public when I'm talking to them? Or are you narrowing it down, like, are there two options you think you'll pick from? Is it still kind of the six options that we had at the, um, public forum?
If I'm not mistaken, it was capital exclusion, one year, one time, all in. And then there was debt exclusion, and there was a three-year, five-year? Do you have it in front of you?
Do you have it?
Is it three-year and five-year?
We had, um, capital exclusions for, with a one-time, a three, and a five.
Yeah, one, three.
We had debt exclusion with a, um, one, three, and five. And, let's see, it looked like it ended up being, at that particular meeting, it came down that most people were in favor of a one-time payment. I will say, personally, that was my stance at that meeting, after hearing from some residents. I think we should offer a one, the capital exclusion only, and the options of a one-time payment, or a five-year exclusion. I, I just think for some families, asking them to do this, and one love some, would in fact be difficult, and a financial burden for them. And so, I think we might have a better option of it passing, if families do have the choice to kind of make a payment schedule, so to speak.
I think six is too many, I'd like to see maybe, maybe two, maybe three at the most. Six is just gonna dilute it to the point where one is 15%, the other is 19%. It's just, you're not gonna get any consensus.
I see some nods, and I think, I, I think those are the two that I recall is either-
One or five?
Either we do it all, or we do it over five, and that's, that's it, right? And, and it, it was those, it was, it was what, one, three, five, and it was either half or the whole amount. There's half from, from stabilization and half not, and that one, the half and half is pretty much off the list.
Yeah, nobody-
So, I think it was the all at once, or over five years. And whether that's something we, I've brainstormed a little bit, just like, thought about myself, we put them both out there, and the voters got to choose one or the other, so we might be able to do that, or we pick one. But I think, do we all agree that those are the two that, that are on the table right now?
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
Does the, does the ballot question?
If you bring these up at, at the town, at the special town meeting, is that what you're saying, you ask people which would you rather do, and only one is on a ballot?
I, I'm not sure, because I haven't really had any discussion about it, but I think it'd be two different warrant articles, and I could vote one down, vote one through. If it was at the STM first, if we put a ballot vote out first, I think you can do both options, pick one. Just like you'd have three candidates pick one seat, I think you can do the same thing, I'm not- could do the same thing. I'm not sure. I haven't asked. But I think we could do language that said, pay it off this year, pay it off over five years and check the box.
It's been my experience in most, most cases, perhaps not all, but they have the special town meetings who can explain, you know, what's going on. If you have the ballot for us people voting, you haven't had a chance to explain what's going on to them. You can send them stuff to read, they may, may not read it. But if you have the special town meeting, you've explained it and you've got their opinion, what, you know, how to vote, how they want to go. Whether you go to a ballot with two questions or not, you know, options is different than if you put up two options at a special town meeting.
What's the timeline on that?
Whichever comes first, the second one will only have one. Because you'll have whichever ones, if either one passed.
What's the timeline though? If you do a town meeting?
Yep.
How long afterwards do you do a ballot?
Thirty-five days?
Thirty-five?
Draft the ballot, get the election warrant in front of you all for posting, certify it with the Secretary of State, have everything printed, notify the residents. It takes about a month.
So from, from STM to ballot would be a month. The other way would be quicker because we need, I mean, it's probably not. It's probably three weeks.
Yeah.
We could pull off an STM in three, but it probably is four.
Fourteen days to post, but you still need time to plan and...
Yeah, so realistically.
It's a month either way.
It's a month either way.
I would just say if it lines up that we need to do the ballot vote first, I think having a public information session close to that would be incredibly helpful because people won't have the opportunity to ask questions like they can at a special town meeting.
Agreed.
And especially if we're doing it with IP mail on one and prop two and a half, you know, if, if all that is rolled into one, I think having somewhere where residents can come and ask questions about all of it would be a really good idea. And if that meant, I guess you can't really, as I say, sending the warrant home ahead of time would be helpful, but you can't if we're doing the ballot first.
I guess I'm hearing we don't do the ballot first.
Yeah, we have the option of doing it whichever way we want. I think doing it, whatever meeting we have is held first and we do a follow-up ballot vote to satisfy the law thirty days, thirty-five days later.
You might even strongly recommend that you vote. We did have a meeting already, I understand that, and we got the input from the voters what they wanted to some degree. But having, since time goes by, it doesn't cost much to have another informational meeting prior to a special town meeting so that they're not at the special town meeting asking every single question that they could possibly imagine, even if most people don't show up for the informational meeting. You at least had it, made the outreach and the try to give them as much information as you can. Then when they get to the special town meeting, word spreads, social media's out there, people talk, and when they get to the special town meeting, they'll be better informed. And certainly, if you tend to have the ballot question first, I think very few people are going to know what's going on other than what's this going to cost me? No. I agree, Dan.
Question or comment or no?
From me?
Yes. No?
Oh.
Jackie?
Well, I was just, I know in other communities, they decide what option. They give you the, the two options on the ballot, two options at special town meeting, and they vote them concurrently, one day after the other. There's not a lag. So that would, I mean, maybe that's an option is you give the voters a, you know, either the all in it or the five year. They choose one at town, a special town meeting, then they go to the ballot box the next day, and that continues because you can get a different mix of people. You can have it pass at special town meeting and fail at the ballot. You can have it pass at the ballot and fail at town meeting. It's just different pools of people. That's all. I think thirty days is almost too much time to have passed. I would prefer to have it like very close together because you can inform the public. They're, they're motivated or they're hot under the collar or whatever, but they're engaged. And if you wait, then you might lose that momentum.
Yeah, we can work on them simultaneously. There's nothing...
Absolutely.
Can you cancel the ballot?
If you do a town meeting that fails, what's the sense of going to ballot?
Good question. But I also think if one passes, which, let's assume we do STM first. If one passes there, then there's no need to vote on the other, and I think it just confuses it. You either vote yes or no on, on what the one was, rather than having, if we, if we issue them a day apart or something, we have to issue them both with both options because you can't, you won't know which one's not on the ballot. So not waiting that thirty days or maybe it's twenty, maybe we can get to twenty-one if we, you know, have it all ready and lined up. But I'm not so in favor of putting out two options.
I agree.
In both settings.
I think there should be one option on the ballot.
Because, I mean, to Jackie's point, you know, option A passes at STM, option B passes in the ballot, where are we now?
Could you then hold it on STM for option B?
We still need working days to legal.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that prior ballot vote would count. So I think that's where you are.
But you're still thirty days out if that happens.
Correct. I think Jackie makes a good point that that downtime in between the two could be significant enough where some people, A, might think, oh, it passed at the STM, so I don't need to show up to vote on this. Or life is busy and so I'm not going to come. Or I think, I agree, I think thirty days is pushing it on the length. And I'd like to see that window narrowed as little as possible.
We can't have voting from eight to nine in the same night, can we? Because that's what I'd ideally like to do, but I know we can't do that.
You cannot do both in the same night. No, it explicitly says you cannot do them both in the same night.
Is there a most common, do you know, Brian, if there's like a most common way to do this for capital projects like this?
I have not done one myself, no. But I can absolutely research it. As Scott was mentioning, this has been quite prevalent this, this year.
Yeah, you sent a link about it's happened.
Many towns are doing this.
Many communities throughout the Commonwealth.
So, so Irving is not unique in experiencing this for the first time. And so I can absolutely get that research and see what worked and what maybe people would have done differently this past season.
It sounds like at this point, unless, we want to have more discussion about it. We know the two options that we're considering putting forward either together or as one, whatever do we decide. We'd like to probably try to get them as close together as we can and what the pros and cons of that are. So we can put all that together for discussions probably later in August around IP specifically. We'll be working on FY twenty-four in the interim. Does that make sense? We can come back with that data and then finalize what, what that plan and language looks like and dates as we're getting there. Does that work? Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've got homework. Thank you. FY twenty-three budget adjustments at this point, none known?
Not for that one at this time.
Don't know of any shifts on twenty-three that are requiring review.
You all on that topic until July fifteenth, the Select Board and FinCom have the authority to move money between the, on the list lines. And so I can keep you all apprised if that's going to be necessary. Right now, it does not look like that's necessary. But I could let you all know. And if necessary, maybe the July tenth meeting could be a potential placeholder for a joint.
Okay. Okay. FY twenty-four, comprehensive budget review, we kind of touched on it a little bit during IP. Expecting that data back in July here. I'm thinking later July or first of August meeting would make sense to review that and have the department heads here and walk through what that looks like. Does that make sense? Anything else on FY twenty-four at this point? Okay.
This is the, this proposal for financial package. Is that twenty-four discussion?
No, that's, that's now. That's next. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. I welcome you to stay for it. I mean, yes, it's for twenty-four, but no, it's not. I don't know. Sorry. That answer's convoluted. If there's nothing else on the budget, we'll jump down to that. A review of financial software procurement. So we had allocated funding to upgrade our financial software and a lot of various different key items that were identified in that procurement. Make a lot of what we do here hopefully more robust. And so the team worked through, reviewed the proposals we got. Do you have that data in front of you? I don't know if you guys do.
We have a memo of it, Brian. It's a financial package.
Got it. A short read. Yeah. Quick read, right, Dan?
I got through most of it. Had thoughts and questions, but...
Unless, unless you're all like Brian to give a summary or someone to give a summary, we can just jump into questions. What's up to you?
Certainly. Jennifer, John, is Jennifer, quick lead on this procurement?
Thank you. So we have the memo. I summarized it very, very briefly. I would say I'll open up the questions. For more detail on any of it, please ask.
How much more do you need for this fiscal year?
What are you looking for?
I think that's seventy-five, then twenty-five was in the budget, so we're at a hundred. But then we still need to run both softwares at the same time. So I think it was just like an extra fourteen thousand.
Okay.
I had a question pretty much financially, but I wasn't there when you talked to all these people. So I don't know if they came here or showed you their stuff or how you talked to them. I wasn't there for any of that. All I've got is a hundred pages I got last night. And, and, and I questioned, and probably have a good reason, that's fine. I'm not, I don't know enough about it to disagree, but I can question why you would choose one over the other, where the one that seems to be being recommended, if I'm looking at the numbers right, unless I got them backwards, it's like ninety-nine thousand dollars the first year and then it's sixty-one thousand dollars annually, give or take a little. And they listed in their, what I thought was kind of a thin explanation to me. They had thirty, they call them governmental units, thirty alone in Massachusetts, it said. And the other place has been in business for twenty years. They've got over two thousand towns, it said. I don't know where the towns are, if they're here or somewhere else, but thirty, two thousand towns. Instead of ninety-nine thousand, they're at seventy-three, nine-seventy. And twenty-six thousand, twenty-six thousand, seven fifty annually, seems like it's about half of what the other one is. And usually, it's not just the lowest bid. If, oh yeah, it's half, I'll take it with less money. But it also seems like, they're telling us, they've got more, way more experience. But is the, the more expensive one providing something that this other one wouldn't or couldn't or doesn't?
Yeah, we definitely did demos of both products. So there was only two of them that met all the qualifications. One of them was disqualified based on what they had submitted. So it was just down to the two companies that we did a demo with. And the one that we chose, didn't choose to go with or that we're not recommending, doesn't have any Massachusetts customers, and we felt like that was a very important piece. And also just reviewing the product, the product just seemed, there was all, all the modules for Zobrio seemed to fit our needs. And we can go ahead and implement it in phases. So as far as like the vendor warrant, we can kind of like slowly add departments to have their own invoices. They have a website, an employee portal that we could use so that employees can track their own time, they can track their own benefits. It just had more, more, more advantages than the other one did. And we had a comparative criteria that we all filled out, so the, the four of us. So we all ranked them. And that was the one that ranked the highest.
Well, it's good, good for me to hear that.
Yep.
It's also good for anybody watching to hear that, that there's a distinct process of comparison that you went through. And I'm pleased that you're all competent, you care about Irving, you know. And, and so with that in mind, you know, you're recommending the one that costs substantially more. I can live with that. I just thought it was a good conscience to ask the question. Why would you not go with one that costs half as much but has experience? Now you sent, you know, seventy pages instead of twenty-nine pages of stuff. But if the seventy pages didn't include what you need, then you need to get what you need. Thank you for answering my question.
So for Zobrio, does it have like the standard eighteen percent maintenance charges?
I was just given the sixty-one thousand, nine-seventy-four per year. So that's all.
That they just present it as a lump sum. So the software support, the annual licensing for it, and the implementation in year one were all to be presented as one. So we don't have that teased out.
Got it. Okay.
We didn't want to end up in the situation that every time we called, we were being billed.
Exactly.
So for this to be flat fee.
Seems as though they did spell out a few instances where if you wanted this, it would cost you something. If you wanted that, over time, it would cost you six thousand or eight thousand, whatever it was. But they were very specific about it. It wasn't, it wasn't, you have to do that to get this, so disqualify them. But it was just open explanation, as I recall.
I assume you spoke with some of the references?
Yes, actually. So I had raving reviews of Zobrio. I reached out to all their references. I was able to speak with each and every one of them. I was only able to get one response from the other company's references. And it was in, it was an email, but it was also, it was a, it was a wonderful review about their company. But I couldn't reach three of the others. And one of the local, one of the towns is actually right in Conway, so it's pretty close.
Well, it's good too to know that in some place that's a fairly small community that recommends what they already have, you know, don't really care what Framingham thinks about it, for example. So what do you need from, from us as a reserve fund transfer? Or are you trying to get the money from?
I think they're hoping for a reserve fund transfer. Big sale.
A lot of cookies.
It's a big bake sale.
If it makes anything else easier, I think people will have the big cookies.
Depends on what kind of cookies. That's a whole nother topic.
Maybe we can get Betty Lou to give me some cookies.
Is, is fourteen thousand the amount you mentioned or is it some...
I believe. Is that what you're agreeing?
So as Jennifer said, when we were first working on this procurement, we were, I think, ambitious, hoping that we could have everything in place by July first. That's not real, July first. We're now aiming for January first implementation. With that being said, there will be about a six-month overlap where we'll have to run both softwares. We'll be onboarding and preparing the new system for a January one live date. And then we will need to wind down the other system. So we will have both service fees for this year, and that's a little over fourteen thousand.
A little over, you know, the amount or?
I don't have the other contract right in front of me, but it's a little over, it's fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars for the year.
Yeah, it's fourteen thousand and change. So I'd say fifteen thousand to be safe if you'd like to.
Well, I just move that the Finance Committee recommend or authorize the Chair to sign a reserve fund transfer of up to fifteen thousand dollars for this purpose. We don't have it in front of us here, but...
And FY twenty-four.
Would that work?
Yes, as long as you ask for FY twenty-four, I'll do it.
For FY twenty-four?
Before you call for that, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
The reserve fund transfer request is going to be an FY twenty-four request, approved for an FY twenty-four expenditure. Is that what I'm hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we can't do it tonight. We can authorize it all, but we can't do it tonight because it's not this year's money. It's next year's money.
Right. We're just getting everything ready so that we can make an award on, prepare for July first.
Because we can't move FY twenty-three reserve funds into a recurring appropriation for this bill?
Just don't need to do that.
It's fine. It's fine. I just wanted to make sure I was right.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
We will put a reserve...
Any nays? Any abstentions? I always forget to ask that, so.
I will, we'll put a reserve fund transfer request on July tenth.
Okay.
Board meeting, and then we'll get it to you.
Okay.
Assuming it gets approved.
Okay.
I assume, I assume.
We got to look this way now.
You're sworn in now, so. I'm like, wait. I, I expect we will likely approve the money that they're going to give us for this.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
If you don't, that would be a problem.
Yeah, it would kind of be a little awkward.
Jennifer, you spoke, is it Conway that runs this as well? Do they have an administrator that just runs this system, or is it part of somebody else's duties?
I spoke with the treasurer. So yep, they use all of the modules that we are getting as well. So the budgeting, the accounting, everything, the whole nine yards, the benefits administration.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Does it have a capital planning component?
Both systems that we looked at not only had budgeting, which is included, it was a requirement of the procurement. And both had a different way of doing a multi-year plan like a capital. I think it was from our review, I believe that the Zobrio model will work a little bit better for what you all are doing for a multi-year, but both had a solution.
Okay.
I'm sure if that's anything you guys would like to see some demos on, you know, any pieces of it, that they would gladly host those for us. We can schedule something anytime before we put it in. Not that that impacts it, but just to see it and know.
Absolutely.
The whole purpose for this procurement beyond trying to create greater efficiencies within our offices and improve functionality in reporting was to be able to, as we become versinet, push access out, appropriate access to other officials who need it. And so if we get to the point where the chairs of FinCon or the chair of capital planning, or however that works, needs to be able to run reports and go in and update your capital budgeting plan, or whatever that looks like, we can provide that, that very specific access. Our existing system doesn't allow us to do that.
Yeah, okay.
So.
And dashboards, which personally, it would be nice to just be able to check a dashboard and see how financially we're doing in a big picture. I think that would be something nice to do, and some frequency for all of us, right?
Yeah, and all departments.
A little better than tables. And all departments, absolutely. Great. Do you, are we looking to award this tonight?
I was just going to ask you that. Or do you want to wait until we get the reserve fund transfer and do it all at the same time?
Do it tonight.
Are we hoping to sign contracts soon? Or you think that, are you hoping, we have to wait to sign contracts to get an award, correct?
Once you make the award, we can proceed with the contract.
So if you're able to do it this evening, that's fantastic. But if you wanted to wait...
We know we have committed funding, so it's not an issue. So unless there's any reasons to not.
Okay.
Which I don't hear any. Six months is going to go quick, too, so. So the better, right?
Yes, yes.
You looking for a motion, then?
Yes, please.
Make a motion that we award the procurement for the Irving Financial Management Software to Zobrio of Pembroke, Mass. For a three-year term effective July one, twenty-twenty-three through June thirty, twenty-twenty-six, in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars. Are you authorizing, or are you, who do you want? I don't care either way. Who's been doing the signing on this?
Oh, she's done all the coming in.
You've done it all?
Okay.
And authorizing treasurer Jennifer Icon to sign any and all documents for the contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I can't wait to see the...
Now the work begins.
Yeah, I can't wait to see the output that comes out of it.
I know, I know. Is that something, though, before John leaves, that you guys would like to maybe try to get scheduled for some demo of some parts of it?
Yep, definitely.
Yeah. I'd love to set that up for you.
Thank you.
Would you just circulate a question on like what sections probably, based on that, or if you have recommendations, and then work on scheduling something?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question before we proceed.
Yes.
If we're planning on implementing it in January, do we have to pay from June to January? Or July to January?
All of the implementation work that has to happen over the next six months. Start with the data conversion team and the mapping for the check accounts, so that your history that's in the current system is going to be moved and mapped into the new system, so we shouldn't lose anything, which is very helpful for budgeting purposes. You can look back on previous years. But that's going to be a significant amount of work.
I was curious.
So the architecture, design, implementation, data conversion, and then the first six months, while we're also learning it as part of the first year service as well as implementation cost.
Right. Anything else for the joint meeting? Okay. But I'll make a motion during the joint meeting with finance and capital, and continue the SLIP board meeting at eight-twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. The FY twenty-four agreement with Franklin County Solid Waste District for sludge hauling and disposal.
This is a pretty standard...
Yeah, our usual kind of annual.
I'm looking at it, and there doesn't seem to be any changes other than the dates.
Correct.
Okay. Making sure I didn't miss anything. It's not a track change, but I didn't see anything that was different.
No, it looks exactly the same as the...
Other than the dates.
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the Franklin County Solid Waste Management District and the Town of Irving regarding the hauling and disposal of sludge for a term of one year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. FY twenty-four agreement with Franklin County Solid Waste District for the transfer station hauling and disposal.
This is also your annual standard.
Also no changes, right?
No changes.
Other than date.
Right.
Make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding by and between Franklin County Solid Waste Management District and the Town of Irving regarding the hauling of recyclables, and the hauling and disposal of solid waste, and the hauling and disposal of bulky waste, and the hauling and disposal of scrap metal and appliances for a term of one year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very specific.
Very.
I took it from the document.
I know, it's, every year, I laugh at it.
A review of trash disposal agreement with Republic Services.
So you all signed a one-year agreement with them last year, the term ends this June thirtieth. That was after we had an issue with the previous disposal site that you had going bankrupt. We've had good service provided by this vendor, so I don't have any concerns about continuing that relationship. And you've just signed a three-year disposal collection agreement, excuse me, with Cassella Waste Management. And we identified this as our disposal location. So my recommendation to the three of you would be to maintain a three-year disposal agreement at this location.
And their proposal's one oh two, and then a five percent escalator for year two, year three?
Correct.
Where are we at right now?
I want to say it was ninety-five a ton.
Ninety-five, ninety-six.
So it's a few dollars more per ton. I did discuss the price with the executive director at the Solid Waste District. The price is a little bit more per ton than what her contract is charging. But there's an administrative fee that gets put on per ton. So in the end, it's negligible to savings, if any, so. She was in support of recommending this, too, as well.
Any questions, concerns, or motions?
No questions or concerns. I'm on a roll, I might as well.
Go for it.
A motion to engage Allied Waste Services of Massachusetts doing business as Republic Services of Springfield for the disposal of municipal solid waste at the McNamara Transfer Station in Springfield, Mass. For a three-year term beginning July one, twenty-twenty-three, ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, with an FY twenty-four disposal rate of one-hundred-and-two dollars per ton, five percent increase in FY twenty-five, additional five percent increase in FY twenty-six, and to authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
FY twenty-twenty-four electric vehicle charging rate.
So as the memorandum explains, we've gone back and taken a look at the current rates for supply and delivery. National Grid had a significant spike over the winter that we caught up to a little bit later after the implementation. So you adjusted at late February the vehicle charging rate for FY twenty-three. Those rates have come back down. They're not scheduled to reassess their rates until November, I believe is the next time they change. And so at this point, they're back to something similar to what we experienced in the past. Eversource hasn't changed dramatically from when you looked at them back in February. So my recommendation is you could adopt a lower vehicle charging rate. Right now, you're currently at sixty-five cents per kilowatt hour. So we could reduce that, if that made sense to the three of you.
Brian, do we know how much use the charging units are receiving from year to year?
I can send a report to the three of you, absolutely. Yeah. The nice thing about the software that manages, it's all, all four of them are on the same platform. So we can give you reports that show you by month, shows you what station, if one is more popular than another, we can send them to you.
Yeah, yeah.
They also identify ours versus internal use versus external consumers.
As you start to build up more of a fleet that uses EV charging, say you were to add more vehicles at the PD. We could charge those separately at a different cost center than we would general public charging. So, yeah, we can set it up to drill down very deeply into the data.
Are we earning any, any income from this, or?
Right now, we're just trying to continue to break even.
Right.
Which is, I think, if we're being one-hundred percent transparent, that was the concern that we all talked about years ago. I know it's definitely something that some of the smaller towns who put these in using grants and other sources came to experience, that there's an administration to all of this, that you don't really get to recoup in the fee that you charge. You really do have to stand top of the rate changes from the supply and delivery. If we ever get to the point in the future where we've really locked in rates on supply and delivery, that may be something that helps stabilize these rates as well. But as these things fluctuate with the market, we have to stand top of it to adjust. And so there's been months that we've taken a bit of a loss, and there's other months that we've made more. So, so no, we haven't made a profit off of this.
There's also probably a balance between the rate and volume.
Absolutely.
Our rate is not very competitive, so.
There's that. There's also a fixed cost between the software that we have to put on here to manage the system, that if you can spread it over more users, incrementally, you start to earn more. If you have fewer users, that cost has to be absorbed by those few users. So there's absolutely correlation to all of that.
So I noticed, did you say there's G one in your memo?
Yeah.
Is that just because they don't have enough volume on them to be under the EV G rates?
Right now, we're on the G one system.
Okay. Because they have those rates that got approved last December? For each of them, for EVs, it was part of the ten-year EV agreement. They have discounted rates of G two, G three, and EV one, EV two for Eversource. We may want to see, I think it's because we don't have enough demand. Like we have to exceed like two-hundred kilowatts to hit some of that stuff.
Probably.
But...
Because the National Grid chargers are their own separate meter, we may be able to...
They have to be separately metered, exactly. That's part of it. This one's not.
Right.
So it's not eligible, but the bank over there of six.
Yeah.
The G two, G three are the new rates for National Grid.
Okay.
I don't know if we hit the monthly and annual numbers. There are, you know, ranges of amounts, but it's worth looking at.
Do you have to consistently hit that every month?
It looks like for G two, we can't exceed two-hundred thousand kilowatts a year, but must use ten K plus. Ten thousand kilowatt plus.
Okay.
Per month.
We may not be hitting that yet.
That doesn't make sense. Filling demand of two-hundred, no more than two-hundred kilowatt, but a monthly of more than ten thousand kilowatt. I think there's a little error in that. Must have been ten thousand watt.
Let me ask our Eversource and National Grid liaisons.
Yeah, this one specifically, National Grid. And then the other, the G three is greater than two-hundred kilowatt for twelve months.
Okay.
But they are special, they're demand charge rates that are for EV chargers only, separate metered, so.
Perfect.
They should be more preferred.
Absolutely.
Might help. Anyhow.
Back to the rate.
Back to the rate.
You think the fifty cents covers our expenses?
At this moment, it would. Again, I think, seeing volatility in the last year and a half, we should probably monitor more than once a year. And so we can definitely schedule a check-in September, October.
Yeah, I was going to say, just before they do their...
Maybe quarterly or every four months or something.
Right.
Okay. Was that your motion to set that rate?
Motion to adopt the FY twenty-four electric vehicle charging rate of fifty cents per kilowatt hour effective July one, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Brian, on number two, you have an administrative fee rate of point-ten kilowatts. Is that included in the fifty cents?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. The only thing that we have to date not recommended was a parking fee. Some communities have high demand for their parking. Irving is not.
Yeah.
Plus with that burden. So we haven't recommended that yet.
It's also if your banks are always full to keep you from just idling.
It's a nice way to keep people moving on.
Yeah, if you're not charging, you might want to not pay the parking fee.
Right, exactly.
Neither problem we have right now.
Correct.
Twenty-twenty-three mutual aid police officer appointments.
So this is something you've been doing annually with chief post? And the recent partnership in the past year with the co-responder program has expanded the department's partnership, official partnership with these other police departments, and therefore, chief is seeking your appointment of more mutual aid officers than we typically would have asked you for.
Any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Give it a whirl. If I mangle any, please help me. Make a motion that we appoint the following mutual aid officers for a term from July first, twenty-twenty-three, through June thirty, twenty-twenty-four. Bernardston Police Department, Chief James Palmieri, Sergeant John Richardson, Officer Curtis Weaver, Officer Thomas Chabot. Shabbat, thank you. Guild Police Department Chief Chris Redmond, Sergeant Jason Bassett. Northfield Police Department Chief Jonathan Hall, Sergeant Alexander Pierskoff, Officer Oleg Kolieski, Officer Chad Sumner. Leverett Police Department Chief Scott Minkler, Sergeant Stephen Gold, and Officer Christian Santiago.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And I believe that is the last item on our agenda for tonight.
That's all I have.
Anything else?
None.
Motion to adjourn at eight forty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.